Call the meeting to order. Those willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody, please mic up. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of 3.11 Scott Woody Technology Technician?
Salute.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Katie, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to number four, public forum. Deb?
No.
Nothing?
No.
Okay, number five, presentation. Nothing there.
Presentation this month.
Move on to number six, consent agenda. Before we have a motion in a second, I'd like to thank Earl Booster Club for a donation of $150 for girls tennis team banner, Claudia Appadon, donation of $500 to the wellness room, Karstic King, Lutheran Church donation of $100 to the wellness room, Bomb Girls donation of $150 to the wellness room, Doll Motors, a donation of $150 to the wellness room, Bernan and Mary Stew, donation of $68.42 to Minders Library for books, Lyle and Marjorie Oy, a donation of $15 to Minders Library for books, and a student donation, anonymous one, of $5 for lunch accounts. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Salute.
Proceed, Katie. Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to seven, the financials. 7.1, review elementary building budget year-to-date. And how's that looking, Jackie?
It's great. I just signed everything off with our effective files and whatever. $5,000 is what Kraus Anderson has and $5,000 is what I have in part.
To date, we're at, we've spent $18.1 million of about $29 million of the project, so.
Okay. Are there any questions for Jackie?
So, um, does Bill say when a, that does he give an okay when something can be paid?
Kraus Anderson approves just about everything. There are a few, well, they approve everything, but there are a few. Some of the testing, when they test the concrete, when we have, there's a third party that has to come out, test the steel, review the structure, so those can't be, they have to be independent. So those bills, American Testing Company or whoever, those come directly to the school. They're paid through the bond project, but they do not go through Kraus Anderson. It's all about quality checks and making sure that, you know, everything out there is being done.
So once Kraus Anderson says it's good.
But all of our contractors, any, you know, the concrete, steel, masons, all of that has to be approved by Kraus Anderson. They inspect and monitor all the work that's done, and so before anybody can get paid, they got to sign off on it that it's been done according to what was bid and what's been contracted. So they do monitor 99% of what, what happens out there.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any other questions? That's non-action, we'll move on to 7.1. Let's see.
1.1.
Yep, 7.11, review elementary building bills. Is there any questions on the building bills?
This month's bills were 1.565 million for the month of January.
Any questions? Okay, that's non-action item. Now we'll move on to 7.1.2, approve the treasures report for the elementary building bond. Are there any questions? Any questions? Jackie, you want to address where we're at on that?
This is basically the bonding house. So that's where we're at for... We have more CDs that are going to be coming due until that's good because we need cash right now. Because they're completing the project faster than we have predicted. So we're, we're fine.
So is, are we going to run into any issues of cash availability? Where, like you say, we're ahead of schedule, everything will flow?
Yep.
Okay?
The financial planners have kind of put that in. They do have some cash that's very available in case you need it. So you can always do that. You're, you're not going to say, "We can't pay our bill this month." We have to pay our bills, so.
Yep.
Yep, and we got it all. Everything's good.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the treasures report for the elementary building bond?
Salute.
Randy, do I have a second?
Brad.
All those in favor of approval of the treasures report for the elementary building bond signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 7.2, review of budget year-to-date.
Okay, this first one is the budget year-to-date with just some budget transfers in it. So you're still going to see like down on... I'm going to die tomorrow. I haven't had a nice meal since I left. But like, people are talking about, I have 303, I had like, they presented the data like 2,568 percent, okay? This is what it looks like. Five budget amendments. When the board denies that they're approved, does this all change? So if you look at the second one, you also attach the second one that is the budget year-to-date if those amendments are approved. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So this is going to be kind of wacky. If you look at the one, if those amendments are approved, then the budget year-to-date goes a different way.
Technically, we really can't present the amended budget to you until you amend it. So this is the budget report with kind of some numbers that are, don't look to be in line. But the next item on our agenda is to do these budget amendments, which adjust, and we'll explain all those budget amendments to you. But overall, I think budget looks to be in line and in order, so.
Okay. That one is a non-action item. So we'll move on to 7.3, approve treasures report for December. Any questions on the treasures report? Anything looking out of line for us on that, Jackie?
No, I don't see. We're going to talk.
Now she's scared me.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any other questions? Hey, do I have a motion to approve the treasures report for December?
Salute.
Second.
Katie, and then Randy. Okay. All those in favor of approval of the treasures report for December signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.4, approve payment of regular bills for January. Does anybody have any questions? Any questions? I had one, Jackie, and I think it was on page 16. It was a co-op bill for 180-some dollars. There was two identical amounts in there.
What did you lose by?
I believe 16.
16 looks like a lot, right? It's more than 100. 151, are you talking about like this one for 184.73 and then one for 180 and then one for 184.73?
Yeah, there were two that were identical amounts. Is that just doubled up or are they two different bills?
No, it's not a double up. It's going to, it's going to like, it's split. This is a software license, so like the first one is going to Brown School. The first one is going to 102, the next one is the colony, the next one is Silver School.
Okay.
So we'll split them on the, like, the schools.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other?
I think we like to do three, kind of average, okay? Just the amount of kids that go to school, the amount of problem and allocate it on that.
Okay. Are there any other questions on the regular bills for January? Any other questions? Hey, do I have a motion to approve the regular bills for January?
Salute.
Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Chrissy. Okay, all those in favor of approved payment of the regular bills for January signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 7.5, approve high school activity bills for January. Are there any questions on the high school activity bills? Any questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the high school activity bills for January?
Salute.
Katie, do I have a second? Randy? Okay. All those in favor of approved the high school activity bills for January signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes.
Can I just clarify something there for Chrissy, new board member? The board never used to see student activity account bills, but then there was an accounting change that came into play for this year. So those all have to now be approved by the board. Before, it used to be something the board never saw. You could ask for it, but it was just didn't need board approval. Now it's kind of a formality to make sure that it gets in our accounting system, so. When you see those activity bills, that's, it's a little bit different. It's not what we've normally done, so.
Sure.
Move on to 7.6, fiscal year 21 budget amendments. Here we go. Jackie.
Okay. Well, the first one, basically what I did is I went across the federal program and opened the ones that I kind of guess I can do. I mean, we did an estimate, or we did not very good. So the first one you see is Title I. And basically what I'm doing here is you'll see Title I revenue, then you'll see the revised budget. Put the revenue, the original budget, but the 227. And then you'll see the difference in that column. And so the comp plan for my purposes, is that going to input all the changes typically. So that's Title I.
Okay.
Can I just add that all of these are basically going to be with federal dollars? Didn't really for sure know our allocations and what they were going to be. And then also, we have a lot of COVID relief funds, the CRFs, the Gears, the Esser, all of those dollars, we weren't, didn't know they were coming. So all of these adjustments have to do with those new dollars and expenditures that we've had, so. It just has been, like Jackie said, our budget was getting a little bit too out of whack and it just, you start asking questions. So this will help to clarify. We don't typically do a lot of budget amendments, but, and again, the board has to set the budget and you have to do the budget amendment, so. Sorry for interrupting, Jackie.
Okay.
Hey. Teamwork makes the dream work.
The next one is Title II, where I don't have any exceptions in the original budget. I thought since that is over, so. I'm not supposed to say this, but it's like...
Perfect.
But that's the plan. Other than it's never going to change all of that. And that's one, I think it's Title III. That, we didn't even know we were going to be receiving at all, so that's... I'm going to add, we didn't have the regular expenditure to be in order getting into.
What exactly is Title III?
Hey, we looked this up.
EL support. English language learner, federal programming dollars.
The next one is Title IV, pretty close to that one, which is the remaining amount of my 500.
Put in that $849.22, yeah.
It's just one. Okay. The next one. So this is our, this is our special aid fund money that's left over after the co-op takeout for the finance 619. So after we hit over 619 money and the co-op pulls off like services, we purchase of them like psychologists, I don't want to show the service history. Okay, the tieback is approved. Then there's always a little bit of that work. And I can pull some of that money out for our special ed fringe benefits that can't be claimed on state special ed. Does that make sense? Why is that? And the next one. Okay. The next one is, is the FR fund money that we received 313,037 cents for that it do, we didn't call, we're going to be receiving it. So there's the revenue. And if you look down the expenditure, that's what we expect it on.
We were given various pots of money. Gears was governor, governor-appointed funds. Esser is other funds that were allocated out based on Title I qualifications. Those we have from, we could go back to last March all the way to September of 2021, we can use those funds. These came directly to us from the federal government. These are the CRF funds, 312,000. We have to spend this by, they said, "You can spend this between July 1 and December 30th," or December 31st. So these were dollars we had to really spend first. We did spend all of our gear money because we went back into March and we, whatever we spent back there. And we have used some of the Esser funds back prior to July 1, but there is still a surplus right now that we're there. And then the new relief package is more of this Esser money. We haven't quite gotten the details on it, but we, we're going to be getting another 800,000 from this, so. But sorry for interrupting again, Jackie.
Well, that's 154. And then the next one would be the Esser funds we're receiving. We actually received like 180-some thousand, but we spent some on the fiscal year '20, some for fiscal year '21, at the 157,000. And I just put everything, this one is what it looks like. I may not spend all just this year, but what I had left over that I didn't know we were going to spend, I threw in like for this effect as a base pass and whatnot. There might be some to carry over into the next year, but I've got it all right here now, but I just follow the plan of spending state and county now, so. Remembering the problems that we're, we're spending it. The next one is Esser, which we're giving to Eastern Community School. Well, there is Esser right out there on there. Oh, I didn't have to do Esser because...
That was last year.
That was last year.
Gear.
We talked about last year. The next one is the long money we receive from the county and a couple of comp picks. And you can see what we received there and what we spent it on. That 5,000, I don't have 56, that's a... We haven't spent that yet. That's there. It's a little bit of a, could be that. Right now, we...
Okay. Anything else on Jackie?
No.
Okay.
I'll give the thing a joke.
Okay.
If I can go back, I'm going to get a heavy, when I get the student numbers, because I don't hear down to one. Or maybe just take a look at C, if the large difference, and if it is, I'll give the numbers to that.
Okay.
Down, I have no good numbers right now, I'm not waiting till I get the student numbers.
And the legislature's starting to talk about not holding schools harmless for loss of pupils right now, so. There's things that could be going on. I, I wouldn't react right now to some of this stuff. But normally, our budgets are pretty, are set and they are what they are. But these are just dollars that have all come to us because of what's going on with COVID, so.
Okay. Are there any questions for Jackie or Kevin on these budget amendments? Any questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 21 budget amendments?
Salute.
Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Randy? All those in favor of approval of the fiscal year 21 budget amendments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to eight, board forum information. 8.1, board reports and updates. Anybody have anything they wish to update?
Negotiations met and we were able to have tentative agreements with the custodians, paraprofessional AP and the principals and teaching learning directors. They're on the agenda for tonight. There's a few outcomes that we wanted as a committee and we feel like these settlements accomplish that.
Yep. Facility steering's met again and toured the new facility. It's coming along great. They're starting to paint and tile and, you know, I think all the walls are upright.
Almost all. There's a little bit, you, you can't see the definition of the, the entrance in the office. Otherwise, everything else has walls and definition to it. There's actually, lights are on up on second floor, so some light fixtures are, the power's in the building, so there's some of that that's, that's going on too. But, yeah. So far, so good. Project's on, on pace.
Yep. Gymnasium, I believe, was totally painted.
Yep.
Basketball hoops were in. Floor goes in in February, wasn't it?
I don't, I can't recall the, I know the floor for the weight fitness would be ported probably by the end of February.
Right.
Um, I can't recall when they want to put the gym floor in. I know it was towards the end, so.
Yeah, and I know Bill was talking, it was still a humidity thing, but the humidities were really close to where they needed them. But it's going to be a very nice facility. Anybody else have anything? Anything else? Okay, then we'll move on to number nine, administrators' report. 9.1, superintendents' report.
Um, enrollment is down about four from last month, so still fairly consistent. Not any big drops or anything there. I'd also like to add, it's Paraprofessional Recognition Week. Deb, do we have anything for the board to?
There is a proclamation from the...
Okay. So, but I think we all kind of, the school district also recognizes it as Paraprofessional Recognition Week and does her own. So thank you to the paras for all of the work they do in, in serving our students. So this is their week and so we'll try to do a few things special for them and, and acknowledge the work that they do. And then I wanted to add on the final piece, if you recall, the State High School League, we, we did agree to pay the bill, even though we didn't really like how they assessed it. We asked them to reconsider. I just wanted to add that they have put together a financial advisory committee and they are asking for appointments from around the state to that. And I know Southwest Minnesota has at least three superintendents who have asked to serve on that committee. And they're going to go through and discuss and give feedback on how they're assessing these fees, so. I'm thinking, I don't know if they're going to do them again next year, but if they do, know that we will have some voice from superintendents on that. And so I know that sometimes we maybe didn't get exactly what we wanted, but I think they are listening and they did put this together, so. I think that was a good step that they should, probably should have thought of that, but hindsight's always 20/20, so.
I think it would have been good, good to hear that explained. You know, how they came up with their decision on how they were going to get reimbursed from the districts.
Right.
That just made no sense.
And they heard about it, so they're, they're now moving things back to getting some input on some of this stuff, so. But that's kind of what I got for, for this month.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin? Any questions? Okay, and we move on to 9.2, principals' report. Tony, Corey, which one you want to start?
I'll go. Well, good evening. I would like to start by just reiterating that our paraprofessionals do a great job and they do a lot of hard work and fill in a lot of the needs of supporting our students, so I really appreciate the work that they do on a daily basis. That said, when I look at the middle and high school this time of year, it's usually fairly quiet as we get into the, I'm meeting the third quarter now. We will start looking at registration for students here in the next few weeks. We've had a lot of conversations with staff about what next year will be from a course offering type of opportunities for kids. So we're looking at that right now. I do know on the minds of a lot of kids is what do you do with, with prom? And I don't normally talk prom in January, but it is kind of important this time of year and I've met with the prom advisors and I know they're working with the, the prom committee. So we want to make sure we can do everything we can to have some type of prom event for kids and so that's what we're proceeding.
Is that in April? What is the date on that, April, some?
Uh, right now, the date is April 24th.
24.
Uh, I am, I, I have proposed to the prom advisors that if we want to move, we could potentially look at an April 10th. That would give us a little flexibility. But right now, it is set for April 24th, so that's, that's where we're at.
Why would we move it ahead?
Uh, based on the unknown of COVID, you know, in, out, that kind of thing. Making sure we get it in. Because if something happens close to the April 24th date, we don't have much time before graduation. So we're, we're trying to be judicious in planning this thing out and trying to make sure we get something for our students. So that's what we're looking at and, yeah, I think that's the main stuff going on.
So as you're looking at next year's scheduling, are you, are you looking at a block or going back to the period scheduling like we've done in past? Or are you going to look at both options?
Uh, right now, we haven't made a determination. I think I've met with several content groups already and I've got some more to go. Trying to get feedback from the teacher's side. I'll probably do a survey of students and see what, what they're thinking. It's, it's really hard to evaluate because it's been two, two full quarters and, you know, if you just go back to the way it was, we're not really sure exactly how school's going to look next year, what requirements will be under from the state. So I think ultimately, we want to make a decision that fits the needs of our students and I go into it, there's, there's no perfect schedule. I think it's finding what works best for providing opportunities for our students and making sure we have the right staffing to do so. So that, that's how we're looking at it. I, I have no preference at the moment, but that's how I guide the conversations there.
Okay. Any other questions for Corey? Any other questions? Okay, Tony?
Good evening. Um, still plugging away and things are going very well at the elementary school. Right now on our docket, we are talking already about kindergarten roundup and what that's going to look like this year in the midst of the pandemic. So just been thinking about that, also talking about conferences and then also scheduling procedures and processes for the new building. I've been starting to work on some of that stuff. And also... I've been starting to work on some of that stuff and also for our title for next year, so just kind of plugging away at things for stuff coming here.
Okay, anybody have questions for Tony? Any questions for Tony? Hearing none, we will move on to nine point three, director of curriculum, teaching and learning.
Hello, everyone. This past Friday, we wrapped up screening for our winter fast bridge screening, our line of assessment that we give in the fall, winter and spring. We screened 719 students in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. The majority of those students were screened here in the district. Our distance learning students participated virtually and this week I'm meeting eighth grade level teams to review that data, so hopefully our next board meeting I can share with you what we've learned. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Melanie? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to number 10, discussion items, 10 point one, learning model. Katie, you wanted to address this?
Yeah, I guess I have some concerns. The last time we were given a report for the week, I kind of got the feeling that we were saying it'd be disruptive to continue to bring our students back and I think that's not true. I think there is going to be some disruption when you're moving kids and when you're bringing kids back in, but I still think it's very important to get our kids back in school and I think we, I feel like we need to keep moving ahead. If we don't, we're just stalling and we're, and you know, I just, I feel like it's so important to have these kids in school, especially the middle schoolers. I mean, there's kids falling behind and some of these kids we're not going to get back. I mean, that's what we're looking at and that really worries me, so that's just my thoughts on it and I know it's disruptive and it's hard and it's extra work. I just feel like we have to find a way.
As other schools have brought them back, Kevin, have they had to revert to distance learning, do you know? I think a lot of the schools up around the cities have, are still in distance learning.
There's a lot of schools who have never had in-person and that's why you hear so much on the news and a push by the governor to get elementary kids back in school because some, and you even hear, you know, Minneapolis, St. Paul, the teachers are pushing back because they want to have, be vaccinated before they bring anybody in. We have other schools who, you know, have brought everybody back in and had K through 12 in school, so they've tended to moved in and out of some learning models. I know that the Big South Conference, there's a lot of push right now for the schools to go back to in-person. We met in December with our, kind of our incident command team that kind of helps to make these decisions. That group decided sixth grade should come back and at the time, we really didn't feel we could bring more in than that, we wanted to see how this goes. I think the next move in what we've talked about, if we do bring in any more students, we have to, we don't have room in here to bring, so we have to, would have to send our elementary students back to their buildings and they would continue to operate as they do in their cohort groups, but we will be putting those buildings back to their full capacity, so. But we were kind of looking more of fourth quarter and kind of evaluating that as we get into February. I think by President's Day, we wanted to see where things were at. You know, at the time, numbers were looking pretty good and when we came back, our numbers have been really good, but they have gradually, or kind of gone back up again, they kind of mirror the counting numbers and if you look at that, our numbers of quarantines and infections all seem to be very similar to what's going on in our community, so. Right now, we're back, we were around 20, we were back to 44. I believe the numbers I've seen were heading back up into the 60s for this week probably, so these are things we want to just keep an eye on and I think we all want students, as many as we can get, we're just nervous about how does that work? And I know there were some comments that it's going to be a pain to move people around, but we do have up to five days for preparing, so when we move between learning models, so we probably would have to take a couple of days to move people back and so we would have to kind of shut it down for two days and, you know.
I just don't want it to be looked at as a disruption.
Right.
Why we're not bringing students back, because I think that's the wrong way to view it.
Yep.
I mean, and that's the wrong thing that we're telling, that's the wrong thing for us to tell the community.
Yep.
Because it should never be a disruption for their kids to be in school.
Nope.
And the kids are playing sports now, so these, a lot of these kids are together every day anyway.
Right.
You know, so I just, I have a hard time sending my kid to practice every day, to practice with 20, 30 kids, but can't go to school.
Right.
That's a problem for me.
I would just echo to kind of what Katie's saying is that we worked collaboratively with the community teachers, administration a year ago to come up with a mission and vision for our district and I keep, I'm being drawn to that goal number two of increasing academic achievement of all students through effective instruction and that piece keeps sticking out to me and I just would challenge, I guess, is the way that we're doing it now the most effective model?
Well, I don't think it'd be the most effective model in majority of the situations. I think for our situation, I would like to see them all back too, but I think, you know, if our numbers are increasing, we do got a way, do we want to try and keep this amount of kids in here every day and distance learn these, or do we want to try and bring everybody back in and run the risk of going to a full distance learn?
I guess it really depends which kid is yours and, I mean, that's what I look at too.
And I agree, I got a fifth grader and I like to see her in school.
Right.
But.
And I have an eighth or seventh grader that I'd like to see in school and I have a 10th grader that I'd like to see in school. I mean, it's all about where your students are, I mean, I mean, what are we going on now? Well, I suppose it's been four months this year and a month and a half last year of school distance learning, roughly.
Yep.
I mean, that's a lot, that's almost a whole year of school where some of these kids have been falling behind.
Right.
And they'll never get that back. I mean, that's what I fear, that they'll never get back up to where they should be.
And I agree 100%.
And I'm not saying it's just our school.
Oh.
It's a worry.
Nationwide, nationwide.
Nationwide, it's a worry.
We are going, we've got a generation of kids that are going to struggle through life because they're falling behind.
Mm-hmm.
And it's no fault of ours, we're trying to do what we can. I do think, you know, from where anybody has kids in the district, I think as a whole board, our goal is to do the best for everybody.
Mm-hmm.
And I think as a whole board, we would love to see everybody in class, you know, and I think we do got to trust administration for them to look at where we're at with numbers and to give us the best educated idea of this is what we need to do. And I trust that they continue to look at it and I think if we can bring some in, they can let us know if we can bring more in, or if they feel that, you know, let's try this and go for a full in-school. I trust they would let us know.
I would just hope that it's not viewed as a disruption.
Right.
That was the wrong.
Yep.
To me, that is the wrong way to look at it.
Yep.
And I don't feel that's the best way to push forward. We need to just keep pushing forward as best as we can with safety measures in place so that our kids can be in school.
Yep.
A disruption is not.
No, I don't feel it should be considered a disruption for anybody.
Yep.
I think it's a, our ultimate goal is to provide the best education opportunities we can for all our students.
Right.
When we went into this last fall, our priority was to make sure that our youngest learners were here every day and that we were consistent and not bouncing between, and that's one thing, I don't know if we've been lucky or our plan was that good or how it would, but I mean, there aren't many districts who have not had to change, I mean, we haven't, all we've done is add kids back in. We added ninth graders one day a week and we added sixth graders. We have not had to go to full blown distance learning once and I think that's the fear is we don't want to have to start bouncing between models and then as you kind of wind down the year, but I think that's always been our point. I know that sometimes it's, some teachers have had concerns about, you know, having to take some time off and if we change things, what will that do to our consistency, so. But we will be looking at it again here. By President's Day was kind of the, was where we left it, we were going to bring the team back together and if there's, I know Chrissy and Amy were a part of it, so if anybody else wants to be a part of that discussion, just let me know and we'll, you can be a part of that. So we also include public health, we have teachers' representation and admin and our regional support team also kind of looks at what we're doing, so.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, I'd love to see all the kids back in school, but I'll also comment that I think it's, I think it's pretty amazing if you look at our peers in the area and what we were able to do with how many kids we did keep in school. You know, we were, at least from my knowledge, we're one of the few that were able to keep as many grades in this school as what we did, so.
Now, the conference schools, there's a lot of them, they're, I think Laverne's going full bore tomorrow, New Ulm, Marshall's going to try it, Worthington's going to try it, they're going to send everybody back. I'm kind of more interested in watching how that goes.
See what happens.
Because it's, I mean, they're, we're on the small end of the conference, but you know, we also have a nice setup here, so.
Right.
But.
I think it's good to just to review the timeframes of when we're looking at it so that we, you know what I mean, so it doesn't just feel like May is way out there in the future that there's increments where it's being looked at and I do commend you guys for making some really tough decisions and doing a very good job.
And maybe we could have went a little more, you'll always second guess after the fact.
Hindsight's 20/20.
How far can you go?
And again, some of the local districts did have to go to full distance learning.
They did, yeah.
Short periods of time, but I would say, Katie, would you have time to go be part of that?
I didn't even know, I guess there was one.
I mean, we have to limit it to three because we can't have four, we can only have three.
Right.
So if Chrissy, Amy and you, Katie, want to be part of that, that would be a good way to get your voice heard and see what they're all looking at and.
But I'm not saying anyone's doing anything wrong, I just don't want us to be stalled and be thinking about it the wrong way.
Yep.
I mean, that's my concern.
Yeah, the message is, don't send that message.
Yes, that's my concern.
Because that's not what we're trying to say.
And it's, that's what we as a board are supposed to be.
That's exactly what I was going to say, I think, Katie, you're doing exactly what the role of the board is and that's to challenge the administration to do what's best for kids and we have to do that though with a level of trust that they're going to be doing that and I have full faith in them. I think we've done an excellent job so far, but our job is to do what we're doing now and have this discussion and make sure that we're doing what's best for kids, so.
Yep. Any further discussion on the learning model? Any further discussion? Okay, then we move on to 11, board action, 11-1, approved policy 213, school board committees, policy 401, equal employment opportunity, policy 402, disability non-discrimination policy, and policy 521, student disability non-discrimination. There was one sentence on the board committee policies for negotiations that I think we need to look at and change and that was that.
You want me to read it, Jeff?
What's that?
You want me to read it?
Sure.
The negotiations committee, there are three members. Item two under the committee says, "The committee will serve a two-year term, so they will be appointed in January of the odd-numbered year and serve through December of the even, next even-numbered year, or through the completion of the current negotiation period."
Okay.
And I think that's, the question you have is on the current, that last portion.
Yes, the staying, negotiating till you're done. The problem that I didn't see when we put this in a few years back of it being a two-year period was that, like this, the three that are on it currently, in two years, there's two of them that are up for election, so if you're in the midst of a negotiations, we wouldn't be filling our policy by those guys trying to finish negotiating because you would be down to one person, because once you're off the board, they can no longer represent the board. So I think that one needs to be struck so that it just, whatever your next negotiation committee is, when it's set up, they just have to finish the negotiations.
I think it makes sense, it's two years, because there's a lot of bargaining units that we have to get through, so.
Yep.
It is good to go through the full cycle.
Yep, so is that something we would need a second reading on or?
This is the second reading because we kind of did this at the organizational meeting and now it's coming forward. The other three policies are formalities, correct, Deb, they just had some updates?
Right. They're not. It was updating from Clay Anderson to Rick, who waited till after the first of the year because it also was the board chair, so.
Yep.
I guess the change that I made in policy 213, I didn't even realize that there was something under the negotiations and I added up approval just because I changed it to other committee assignments, community library, school board appointee, you had changed that privilege for that member and I guess that's the only thing I was aware of when I put it up for approval, so I mean, if there's something else.
Well, and I just happened to be thinking and reading through these again this past weekend and I think it's something that the board's not going to be able to follow their own policies potentially if we leave it the way it is. So I make a motion that we strike them that sentence.
The, strike the "or" through the completion of the current negotiation period, just remove that.
Yes.
And end the sentence with "through December."
Yes.
Okay.
I second that.
And Katie seconds that. So do, I have a motion to approve the policies 213, 401, 402, 521.
And then just change what the negotiations are dropping.
Can we discuss just a little?
I have a one, yeah, I have a question too.
I mean, I understand the whole, what's going on, I mean, it makes total sense. The other thing that I question is just, I think there's some importance to the continuity of the board negotiating and, I mean, just example of us.
Yeah.
If it would just change, like to the new committee with Brad and Lance.
Yep.
You know, mid-negotiations, I think that would be, I don't know, going backwards almost, like, could we get them up to speed enough or what if their outcomes were different than what we had originally planned on doing that? So I would like to see some language that there would be some continuity to finish out a current negotiation or something like that.
The option, yeah, like striking that out doesn't even give that option that if it's there, where we were lucky enough that we were, had that option because we were still on the board.
Yeah.
So I can appreciate what you're saying though, that if those current board members were no longer on the board, then you would be stuck, but I think that this still allows for that option of the continuation.
Which, and I guess, over the years of being on the negotiations committee, this only got changed probably in the last six years, I think.
Mm-hmm.
And before, it was just a one year, you were only on for one year and if you were in the middle of it, you were in the middle of it, the next group took over.
Okay. Could we look to see if there's language in other districts that have a two-year cycle with continuing a term or something like that? I mean, I just don't want to jump into it.
Okay.
So I guess I'm not following though, like, if you didn't get back on the board, how would you continue to negotiate on a year?
We could add language in here that says, "Only if you're not on the board," but if we strike that whole thing out, then it's saying that I'm back on.
I see what you're saying, okay.
You know what I mean?
Okay.
It would allow some more flexibility, I think, in that.
Okay. Well, then, then I would say we need to amend the motion or cancel the motion that we currently have and then make a new motion to approve 401, 402, and 521 and hold 213 to the next month.
Or send it back to the Policy Committee and we can look at it again next, you know, next...
To have them find more information.
Do you want to make that motion, Jeff?
You haven't voted on it.
Yeah, we haven't voted on it.
No.
You haven't voted on it, just go ahead and make a new motion.
Okay. So I will make a motion to approve Policies 401, 521, and 402 and to send Policy 213 back to the Policy Committee to address Negotiations Committee.
Second.
And Randy seconds. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in approval of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 11.2. Pat Wheat's, Mayor Appointee to the Public Library. Is there any discussion?
Nathan, we approved Nathan Maim, I believe, in December, but he resigned because he's moving. So the mayor has presented forth Pat Wheat's. I recommend approval.
Okay. So since, since he resigned and that appointment has to be approved, would we not have to approve the resignation of him to approve the appointment of Pat?
I guess I hadn't really thought about that, so.
After starting the government's advocate.
The agreement says that the mayor's appointment needs to be approved by the City Council and the School Board.
Correct.
So this is that appointment. Basically, the other point could be is Nathan declined the appointment after the fact, so we have a vacancy. So it isn't like we're going to say, "No, you can't."
Right, right.
He's gone, so.
Okay.
It's an opening that is being filled here, so.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve Pat Wheat's, Mayor Appointee to the Public Library Board?
Some moved.
We got Katie and Brad. Okay, all those in favor of appointing Pat Wheat to the Library Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.3, Approve Facilities Agreement with Minnesota West Community and Technical College. Are there any questions?
This is for second semester. We utilize their space for different courses, so this is the second semester agreement.
Okay. Any questions? I did have one about the contract date, that it ends on 5/18, that, you know, if needed, that we needed more snow days because the 17th and 18th are snow days that are built in there, if that was all right. And Kevin has assured that that would continue if needed. So do I have a motion to approve the Facilities Agreement with Minnesota West Community and Tech College?
Some moved.
Chrissy, do I have a second?
Second.
Amy. All those in favor of approving the Facilities Agreement with Minnesota West signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.4, Approve Contract for Pipestone Area Education Special Ed Pair Professionals. Any questions?
The Negotiations Committee has worked since, I believe it was last October.
Yep.
Met, well, five times, six times, I think.
Yep.
So, and they recommend approval of the contract. A pair of professionals, just maybe to be aware, have been the lowest paid. Our contract with them is a little bit below the regional average, so you will see a pretty significant increase here to get the pair of professional wages caught back up. So I believe it was about a 15% increase over two years. So that's not typical, but it needed to get things back in order, so.
I think it's important to raise it just so that we can get people that'll want to stick with it and people that are...
Qualified.
Qualified for the job.
Right.
That was an outcome that we wanted as a committee to when we got into this was just, retention was one and just getting people in the door that are more qualified was two.
Yep. So any further discussion? Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the contract with Pipestone Area Education Pair Professionals?
Some moved.
Katie, do I have a second? Brad. Okay. All those in favor of approval of the contract for Pipestone Area Professionals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.5, Approve Contract for the Pipestone Area Custodians, Secretaries, and AP. Do I address that one, Kevin?
Again, the committee recommends the approval. This ends up being a total package over two years of about 5.6% increase. I believe it was two and a half and just over three for year two. So that was, that was agreed upon and I probably should have added, the units have also approved these contracts on their end, so the employees have accepted these contracts on their side of things, so.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Any further questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the contracts for Pipestone Area with Custodians, Secretaries, and AP?
Some moved.
Chrissy, do I have a second?
Second.
Randy. All those in favor of approving the contract, Pipestone Area Custodians, Secretaries, and AP signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.6, Approve The Contract With Melanie Rommet.
Negotiations Committee also did this. I lumped all the administrators in together. They received about a 5.78% increase, which was about two, 3.3% in year one and 2.2% in year two. So didn't break out Ms. Rommetes specifically, but all the administrators are about in that range.
My only concern about the raises given on these three contracts is I feel like within light of the recent survey, that we need to, a lot of the staff's concerns are involved discipline and communication from the administration. So I just feel like I would like to see an action plan from the administration prior to approving these contracts on how we're going, I mean, just ideas and just an action plan on how we can move in the right direction.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the contract for Melanie?
Some moved.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Amy. Okay. All those in favor of approval of the contract for Melanie signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Three opposed. Katie, Chrissy, and Brad.
Katie, Chrissy, Brad. No, I'm sorry. Katie, Chrissy, Brad.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So now that motion fails for not having a majority. Okay. Motion fails for failure of a majority. Move on to 11.7, Approve Principal Contract For Tony Bartman.
And Cory.
Yeah. You want to do them together?
They are together.
Oh, they are. Okay. So is there any discussion on approval of the contract for Tony Bartman and Cory Strasser?
Same concern.
Same concerns from Katie?
I would just like to add that the committee has put in a lot of work with a lot of these negotiations, and it is our recommendation that we approve the contracts. If we don't need a committee to do that, then I guess we don't need one.
Well, can't you table it till the next meeting so at least they have a option to, you know, say after we have this work session to tell us what their plans are to help with the survey problems?
That was part of the discussions that we've had as a committee with Kevin and the administration of going along with the contracts. Those are all part of the committee work that we've done is taken that into consideration when we've brought these forward to the board. If we didn't explain that, I guess that's on us, but yeah, it's just kind of where I stand. Those are all things we've considered when we're in the negotiations at the table with the administration.
Well, how long have we had the survey results?
Yeah, a week.
I don't think we needed the survey results to know some of what's going on within the district.
I guess, you know, and based on that, based on these results that were presented to us in the last week, that for us to actually do our jobs and approve this, we at least need to have the discussion in this work session and we do need a plan. I know myself, I mean, I, it would happen, it would happen at my job. If I had a survey like this on my, you know, performance, I would, I would have to have an action plan on how I was going to approve it and I should, should, it wouldn't get raised.
I would agree. Agreed.
I just want to add that the survey was from staff. It wasn't from the supervisor of the employees, so they're not actual performance results and we really can't discuss that at an open meeting anyway, performance, so I don't, that's just something I want to add. It was a survey done by staff and it's very important that we take that into consideration. There's no doubt about it. And we do need to have action plans around it, but the committee did the work and we feel the settlements that are proposed are...
And I'm not saying that they'll never get approved. I'm just saying, in light, in light, let's just hold it for a month and have our discussions tonight and have some type of plan on how some of the highlighted things in the survey, which was 50% involvement of the staff in the survey, which is pretty good.
Yeah.
Well, I agree. The valuable information we have from...
So I guess, Randy, I don't agree that this could have been taken into consideration when we only got these results within the last week.
The survey wasn't taken into consideration, but I guess when we're at the negotiating and there's discussion about performance happens with Kevin and the administration because he's their supervisor, those are the discussions that we've had.
I understand that, but if there's staff concerned about discipline, which is a direct role of administration, then I feel like that's a concern, especially where...
I'm not saying it's not. I said I agree with everything in the survey. We need to take action on it.
Okay.
It's hard for me to tie it to performance when staff aren't evaluating their supervisors. Because I have a strong feeling that if that was the case at any job, most supervisors aren't going to get a good review. But that's just me and I agree that we need to take all the feedback we get from the survey and develop an action plan. I just don't think this and these are, I mean, they're tied in together, but it's just the committee did the work to come up with a, an agreeable settlement and we feel like this accounts for that. So, but that's where it is. If we need to do an action plan, I'm all for it. I'm one of seven, so I'm here to work.
Yep. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve Principal's Contract For Tony and Cory Strasser?
Some moved.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Amy. All those in favor of approval of the contracts for Tony Bartman and Cory Strasser signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Same split. Motion fails. Move on to 11.9, Approve Weight Fitness Furnishings and Wrestling Mat. Do I have a motion or any discussion?
Facility Steering Committee has gone through this. The furnishings for the new weight fitness room, there's equipment in there, weight, weight equipment, also exercise equipment for that. And then with the expansion of the wrestling room, more wrestling mats needed are needed, so this also includes that. The dollar amount was about $15,000 above what was budgeted for furnishings, but the committee recommends we use contingency to just do it, do it the right way. And I know that there also were some possible donations that could come about in the future to help offset some of this, but as presented, the committee recommends the approval of these furnishings.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Okay.
Is there, is there enough in here to furnish that room? Because I see like, you know, one, one bike, you know, one elliptical, and I mean, is it...
We have some of those.
We have some of those items?
Yeah, already. So I think there's enough, the way it looked, what they told me, the AD and the coaches and the fire teachers.
That this would be enough to offset what we already have?
Right.
All right. I just want to make sure we're spending a lot of money.
I don't...
But if we're going to do it...
We're trying to use what we already have that's in good enough condition, so that'll be moved in there also.
Perfect.
Sorry.
Yep. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the Weight Fitness Furnishings and Wrestling Mat?
Some moved.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Brad. All those in favor of approving the Weight Fitness Furnishings and Wrestling Mat signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Number 12, Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Brad. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.